And then it wasn't too bad until the start of that.
But it might be again in August. So you're not getting any.
As I said, everything on the whole side of that sort of album and all through. It's unfortunate to her as well.
So she said that.
She said, well. Oh, maybe the order. Whatever. And Mike.
You know.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which you stand, one nation under God, in your wisdom with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mike. Invitation for a citizen to appear before the board and request time in the future, and we have no one, so we'll move on. The approval of the agenda, are there any changes in the agenda? Any staff members have anything that needs to be added or deleted from the agenda?
I'll just note that the claims, because they weren't received till Thursday, are printed on your desk, and there is a copy back on the media table. And then the finance officer, Vicky Busis, handed out two sheets on wind tower comparisons.
Okay.
Do we have the minutes for the 15th?
They're in the packet.
Oh, I thought you, your email said it'd be, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Yeah, okay.
We, we have some corrected minutes, but they'll be on the next agenda.
That's the accusation. That's what I thought.
Yeah, no, they'll be on the next agenda.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, that's what I said. You bring a copy of those to this.
Yeah, but when I.
That's what I thought.
When I looked, when I looked at them, they actually had a motion listed for action, so I didn't think it could probably be done as just part of the regular minutes. So, because they have a different motion listed, so I'm gonna bring them to the next meeting. Because you had motion to amend the minutes, and ours is just approval of the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, the correction will be at the next meet.
Okay. Consent agenda items, are there any questions, concerns regarding the consent agenda items? Hearing none, now we'll approve the consent agenda without objection. We'll move forward into our routine business, which is the approval of the claims. And everyone has reviewed the claims, I hope, for discussion purposes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Krogman, second by Wyeth, discussion? Questions? Any staff have any clarifications or anything they'd like to make regarding the claims? Okay. Please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is our department head reports, and Megan, you're out front today, so if you'd come up to the desk so we can all hear you, and we'll get your report from community development.
So there's no major reports. This week is severe weather awareness week, so Bob's just wanted me to bring that up. I'll be here to answer any questions if you have clarification on the East River plat later on the agenda, but there's nothing major. Bob's out of town, I'll be going to a conference at the end of the week. We've been getting more applications in our department for the summer, so we're a lot busier, and the comprehensive plan is moving along, so.
Okay, any questions for Megan? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Oh, we'll start on Dick's end this time, Mr. Burke from Highway Department.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mainly last week, I attended the NACE conference down in Baton Rouge, and they had a lot of good technical sessions that I attended, culvert replacement and rehabilitation, and new bridge technologies, and advanced technologies for improving safety, and bridge deck overlays and repairs, and pavement preservation. So it was valuable conference that way, and, you know, you can't use all those stuff, but there's some very good ideas, and I'll bring that up next week when we have our strategic planning thing. Weather permitting, next week, they'll probably start on the dirt work for the new building, the truck storage building. We're still crack filling as weather permits, and we started our 10-hour days last week. Weight restrictions will probably be on till the first of May, which would be a week from this coming Thursday. And finally, I'm finishing up working on the truck specs for the box, sander, plow, wing, the whole 10 yards, so that will be coming in the near future, hopefully. And that's about it, unless you have some questions.
How, how are the roads holding up as the frost is coming out?
A lot better than anticipated. We've been kinda scoping them out on a very regular basis to see if there's any soft spots appearing, but yeah, so far, they're handling it real well. There's still some frost down there, about a foot or two, so.
Yeah. Gravel roads, the township roads, those.
Nothing's, yeah.
Nothing for you or anything?
Right. So, cross your fingers. We could use a good, nice soaking rain, and that would probably do us a lot of good, but we'll wait and see what tomorrow and Thursday brings.
Okay. Other questions for Dick? Thanks, Dick, and we'll be visiting with you a little later.
You're welcome.
In the agenda. Marty?
Good morning.
Morning.
Got an inmate count of 16 today, and we're gonna lose three this week, so hopefully things don't pick up during the weekend, and we'll have a nice number. Just, you know, we've, we've been really lucky this year for inmates, you know, as far as low population, but, but as I said before, we've had some high maintenance inmates, and there's two of them that's probably, has spent about $14,000 in medical costs. One's been sent to the penitentiary now, so that's, that person's gone, but it's probably over $10,000 in medical costs that Brookings County has, has paid for him. And then I had another inmate that was about, about $6,000, but we had to take him to Sioux Falls, but they're working with us and, and give us some Medicaid prices, which I, which was great, so that goes down to half, so. So the population is down, but the cost of taking care of them is up, and we probably won't recoup that money. They have nothing, so we put liens on them, but if they don't have property or anything to get that back, it's just, we're probably stuck. I have 28 participants on PBT that come in twice a day. I have 25 on SCRAM to come in once a week. I have one person that has to come in three times a week to do a UA test. So, population is down, but we're still busy with people coming and going. Uh, your analysis, they have taken. Today, we're gonna go live with our records management, so about 10 o'clock, if the lights dim, we're in trouble. So anxious for that to happen, I think that's, is gonna be great for all our departments once we get used to it, state's attorney and, and all of us, so. Last week, I'm hoping that last week was our last snowstorm, and it never fails, something has to happen on the last day, is, have a, one of my patrol cars got crashed into on the interstate, and I'm pretty verbal about, I don't like my guys on the interstate, but what do you do when, when we're short help? And he was doing, providing traffic control and was rear-ended by a semi, and he went to the emergency room and got checked out, and he's fine. He was sitting still, he saw the semi coming, so he braced himself, so that might help, but the, the car's totaled. It was the pickup, it broke both axles and pushed him into the ditch and stuff. The trooper that came and investigated the accident did cite the semi driver, so, for overdriving. So we're down a patrol car right now, but we're making it work. What's good is about it, I was going to replace that one anyway, but it was gonna go to a detective, so I still wanted it in the fleet for a detective, so he was anxious to get that, but I told him he still could go out and sit in it if he wanted to. From the driver's side, it still looks pretty good, if you don't look at the passenger's side, but the main thing is nobody gets hurt. We can, we can fix cars and get new cars and stuff. Next week, Tuesday, Bart Siewe, the jail minister, and myself is going to the sheriff's conference with the police chiefs, and, well, there's some jail things that I'm bringing Bart along that, and, and so we're just, it should be a good, good meeting, lots of, lots of things on the agenda there. Other than that, if you've got any questions?
Does the, the truck driver's insurance help us with the replacement of vehicle?
It should, yeah, 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 it should. It, he was, he was overdriving, he was following the car, come up on a car too fast, and, and went, swung around, and the deputy was over on the, on the passing side in the median, providing traffic control for a semi that was jackknifed in, in there. And when the semi went around, he come around too wide, and he had caught the corner of the patrol car. He was, the patrol car was off the road, he was, he was on the, in the ditch almost, so. I shouldn't say in the ditch, but he's on the, on the side, but he's completely off the highway, so semi just came around too quickly. It was either, the semi driver says either hit the car in front of him or, and swing around, and when he swung around, he caught the deputy car. So luckily, nobody got hurt.
Mm-hmm.
Little dent on the semi.
And you've got all your equipment now for the reporting, the new program that's starting at about 45 minutes?
Yes, yes, we're all up to, up to date. The only thing I'm waiting for is that the commission, you authorized me money for, budget for our mobile data, and I'm waiting for those to come in. They're not gonna make it in time for a ZERK or two, but they're gonna come back, they said they'd come back and, and, and get us going on our mobile data. So I'm excited for that, too, there's, we can do a lot of things with our mobile data on civil process, they can just, when they go out and serve civil process, they just go on their mobile data, and it goes back to the office, and Kathy pulls out a sheet and sends it back to the business, and things are gonna, it's gonna be really timed, you know, once, once we learn everything, it's really gonna cut down a lot of double-doing things, if that makes sense, so. Pretty anxious, I don't know if the state's attorney's real anxious for us, we're anxious just to send them everything, and we don't have to make copies anymore, but unless Abby says we have to, but.
And I think, in, in Bob's absence, but at our 911 meeting, you were there, and our last siren test, all the sirens went off simultaneously throughout the county.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything worked perfect.
Yeah. And then, I don't know if you noticed, and this is a little bit off the subject, but with the sirens with Lake Ponce, that, you know, there're gonna be sirens out there, John Barthel, who's a new deputy at, at Hamlin County, actually worked part-time for me as corrections, and he got hired as a Hamlin County deputy, he's the one that saved those two individuals in, in Lake Ponce, that was John. He just turned, in December, he just turned 21. He's, he's just a good kid, I wish I could've kept him for, for my staff, but, so I'm pretty proud of him to, to do what he did yesterday, so.
Okay, any other questions for Marty? Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Vicky from the finance office, good morning.
I put on your, at your spots today, the wind tower money came in, and just so you're aware, if anybody has any questions or comes to you with any comments, with the new legislation, they are dividing it different, instead of by the levies, they are dividing it 50% to the schools, 15% to the townships, and 35% to the county, so it's a big increase, especially for the townships. The county was down about 15,000, we were anticipating that it would be down this year. The schools are down, but the townships did make a lot more, so they should hopefully be happy, but just wanted you to be aware of it, if any of them come up to you, this is what they'll be getting, they'll be getting it with their apportioning next month, so, letting you know that. And I went to that tabletop exercise last Wednesday with Bob at the city, and that was a good exercise. Otherwise, just collecting taxes and getting ready for the election.
Okay, questions of Vicky? Easy report?
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you for giving us that report. Sure.
Bob, Veterans Affairs and Welfare? Bob, I mean, Mike.
I think you're missing Bob.
I'm missing Bob, aren't I?
You got Bob on the mind there.
Good morning. I also participated in the tabletop exercise, I thought it went quite well, and it was quite informative, at least for me, not ever witnessing that before. Good news, the, I did go to a housing board meeting on the 17th, and it looks like that the Brookings Housing Board is, is doing better, the, there was a lot of concern last year when the funding was cut so much that we would be kind of in a tailspin and stuff, but I guess whenever it comes with funding from the federal government, you're, you're never quite sure, it's, it's kind of a roller coaster, and I'm more of a flat person, so. Anyway, that was kind of interesting, and glad to hear things are kinda going around. We are still assisting with the deposit program. Entity here had gotten some money for deposits, there's still money left for those that are still needing deposits, so. And we're still working with that on them. The, the big part of it is the inspection portion that goes with it, and right now, we do have an agreement with Brookings Housing that they, we can use their inspector, not we, but the person that's asking for the deposit can use their inspector to have the place inspected, and they would be responsible, the renter would be responsible for the $60 fee upfront for that. For like, on the, on the veteran's side of things, I did go down last Wednesday afternoon and met with members of the state Veterans Affairs Office in regards to an upcoming training, and how all that's all going together. Currently, we have about 50 people participating in it, so I kinda fired up about that, that statewide. Also, we're in the middle of what's called RAV, Reach All Veterans, it's Secretary Zimmerman's program that goes with the county veteran service officers, along with the state, to call every veteran in our counties. Currently, we got a little over 200, 250 veterans that I've been able to contact so far. One thing that I do is when I, when I travel, I have my headset, and so I, I call them, and some, some of the people I don't think really believe it's the Brookings County Veteran Service Officer on Friday at, at 7:00 at night, nor do I think they completely believe it's the Veteran Service Officer when it's 8:00 on a Sunday night. But I, I tell them this is part of this program, and so I guess if, if anyone does ask you, yes, that is, that is truly I that is doing that, so. The one thing I did not get a travel request in for, and I was just gonna say, I've, I've been asked to participate in a meeting down in Denver on May 1st and 2nd, and I'll put in a travel request, and all that travel will be covered by outside sources, so.
Okay, questions for Bob? Mike, God, keep calling him Bob, sorry about that. You, you need to, you need to put a wig on, and then I'll.
I'll just have to, Mike, I'll change my middle name to Robert.
Yeah.
Mike, is there, are there, have a lot of people taken advan, taken advantage of that deposit money? Or is it fewer than you anticipated, Mike?
I, I think we've had a number, you know, coming through my office, we've had probably 10 or so that have come through, the problem is that they're not all doing what they're supposed to do, and some of them, they've already moved in and are looking for a deposit, that's happened with three of them. Some of the other places did not pass inspection. The city inspection is not the same as the HUD inspection, and the HUD inspection is a lot more detailed, along with the fact that they have to have the, make sure that any of the lead paint is covered and stuff like that, so. So that's probably the biggest issue. I do know we've had probably about a 50-50% success rate, there is still money left, though, so.
Mike, I think the one thing that most people don't understand is, that's the cooperation between your agency and, and other charitable funds in the community, and the, the fact that those that maybe are trying to work the system and, and probably aren't deserving as others, shouldn't say weeded out, but in a way, rightfully so, and that comes from cooperation and, and communication between the agencies, and the people in the community should understand that, that agencies do work together to see that the money goes to deserving people, so, very good, appreciate it. Take a magic marker and put a big M on that, on your head, and then I'll remember, Willie. Okay, thanks, Mike. I think that's it for our department heads with us today, get a couple others later. Finance office, Stacy?
We do have to take action on the second quarter transfers is the first thing, I guess.
Okay, did you want to quickly review those, they're in our packet, everybody's seen them? Okay, moved by Falcon, second by Wyeth, discussion? Hearing none, call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Then the other thing to note for the March report is the general fund surplus analysis, this is a reporting month to legislative audit, and we are well below our 40% for March, but I think, I don't know if Stephanie had a chance to do the spreadsheets that we do, but.
I did a chart overview for everyone in your report, I can go through that later or now if you'd like.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on to our regular business. Action to approve Resolution 14-4, which is the final plat for Lot 1 of the Alton Substation Edition in 3111047. Chair would entertain a motion. Moved by Krogman, second, Miller? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is our action to authorize the chair to sign the quarterly state and local agreement for the second quarter of 14. Moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Questions, discussion? Pretty routine. Please call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number C is action to approve our tax delinquent agreement, agreement number 1437, in the amount of 195960. It's, the agreement is in our packet, chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Miller?
Second.
Second by, was that Wyeth?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion, questions of the finance office regarding such?
Just a question, Vicky, this is, goes back to 2008, so it's a small amount every year, and it's been totaling?
Yes, yeah, and this is one that we were going to start taking tax deed, and they came in and, and made an agreement, and there was a bankruptcy issue, so we couldn't do anything earlier.
Thank you.
Okay, good question, any other questions? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, action item D is a funding request from, in the amount of $1,500 for the annual Uncle Sam jam on the 4th of July out at Swiftell. For discussion, chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Miller?
Second.
Second by Krogman, discussion? I think this is something we've done for a number of years, and it turns into quite a community event.
We updated this from last year, $300.
Yep. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the next item E is kind of an annual request that comes from the Volga Old Timers' Day Celebration Committee, and that's for permission to hold their public display of fireworks during their Old Timers' Day on Friday, June 13th, out at Meadow Creek Golf Course in Volga. Moved by.
Wyeth.
Wyeth.
Second.
Second by Krogman, discussion?
I think in the past, haven't we made them, acquired them, required departments too?
Yes.
Okay, that's the event, because you never know what the weather's gonna do if it gets dry.
You have done that, and in the past, there was also probably a burn ban in place, which there isn't currently right now, but usually what you've done is just said that they seek permission from the local fire department prior to the display.
Yeah, and I think it's. Yeah, it's, you know, all of these small communities have got great little festivities they put on each summer, and, and obviously, the firemen are deeply involved in all the committees and everything, and they're probably the ones that are lighting the fireworks, so.
Just a question, is Meadow Creek in the county, or outside the, the city Volga?
It's outside of the city limits of Volga.
It is, okay.
Yep.
We probably issue them a beer license, so.
So do we need to add an amendment to that with the approval from the fire department?
My assumption was that was in my motion, because that's what we did last year, I happen to remember that from last year.
Okay.
When they asked for it, I just assumed that was automatic.
Okay, Ryan, do you want to make an, make an amendment that it be at the discretion of the local fire department?
Sure.
Or the Volga Fire Department?
As long as they give the okay, you know, at the approval that they can.
Okay, that's amendment, is there a second to the amendment by Falcon? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now we'll vote on the main motion as amended, call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item F is action to approve Resolution 1415, and this is authorizing the purchase of the crane service based on the price established through the Spink County, South Dakota bid process, and chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Miller? Second, Wyeth. Any questions, comments? Dick, do you have anything to offer? We had everything in the packet.
It's the same company we have contracted with before, and we just wanted to make sure we had their paperwork in order.
Yep, okay. Questions? Dennis?
Just without reading all the documents here, is this just a, a service from this company to, to do that at a fixed hourly rate?
They, they do almost all the culvert replacement and small bridge replacement for all these counties that are like Brookings, that have quite a few structures, and they are one of the few that will do it as a day labor type charge, so that's why we're going through this process.
Okay, good question, any others? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G is action to approve the following bridge replacement resolutions, 14-16 through 14-20. Can one action take care of all of these, or do we need to go through them individually?
They're each resolutions, so I think you have to act on each resolution.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion on Resolution 14-16. This is, okay, moved by Wyeth, second by Falcon. Any questions on this? Dick, anytime there's a comment, feel free to bring us, you know, make it if you feel it's appropriate.
Currently, the DOT is not acting on any or adding any more bridges to the bridge replacement schedule because they're so full and backed up. However, one of the necessities to get it scheduled is to pass a resolution so that they understand we're serious about the commitment to getting it done. So by passing these, let me go back a step, from our bridge inspections, and we got the. report back, these were the only structures that were deficient enough to be included in the replacement program that hadn't already been included. So I wanted to make sure that they get on the list and then whenever they can act on them, we'll get notification from the DOT that, that they're on the way, but you want to make sure you get them on as soon as possible, whenever it becomes eligible.
Eligible is below fifty on the sufficiency?
Yes, on the, yes.
And then how many do we currently have out there that are on the list that aren't?
I would, I think there's eleven, might be more like fourteen now with these, or fifteen. We're, we're still good compared to the rest of South Dakota because with the number of structures we got, we only have like thirty-five that are, you know, getting down close to the deficiency and we've only got a few that are in the deficiency category.
So my next follow-up question is, I see this proposed year of twenty twenty and when they get below fifty, is there lifespan left? Obviously depends on the traffic and that kind of stuff. Is there usually ten to fifteen years left in them or is this something that's gonna need to be done before federal aid can get to it?
Right, that, what it would be is, as the bridge structure has seen its probably better days, the deficiency rating would be below fifty but yet usable and you would probably have restricted weight or weight restrictions on that structure. It depends upon what they determine the, the class is. Like for example, the one that'll be done this summer out by the gun range, a mile north of the gun range, that one has been on for a significant number of years and it's finally getting eligible and, and being replaced. So it, to answer your question in a brief manner, it varies, but they watch it considerably closer than they would if it didn't have that deficiency. So it's, it's just kind of a guideline that the state uses as a priority system because obviously everybody thinks their bridge is the most important bridge, so.
You know, remind me what, what a bridge replacement cost ballpark again we're talking about?
Usually, obviously by the size of the structure, but normally our contribution is right in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. It's twenty percent.
Okay, and so then that would mean you're probably, you know, a million and a half to replace a bridge?
Correct. Like the one that'll be going in next summer up at, north of Bruce, that'll easily be a million and a half.
Gotcha. All right.
Dick, I guess just because these get, just because these get sent in in a particular order doesn't mean that's the order they're in. They, you can change these, move these as long as the resolutions appear. If one gets, quickly deteriorates, you can put that at the top of the list. There's really no list that's, that's in stone.
Correct. The other thing you want to remember, that isn't determined by us, that's determined by the DOT. So that's why some of these bridges that we're just getting to now have been on it since like nineteen ninety-eight. It's crazy, but it, they've been on a long time.
Who, who gives the sufficiency rating? Who decides that? Is that a county employee or is that, do we hire somebody?
No, yes, we hire when they do their bridge inspections.
Is that Banner?
That's Banner and Banner, that's submitted to the DOT and then the DOT would come up with the actual deficiency rating.
Okay. All right.
The long story short, Ryan, is we got to be prepared and be thinking in the future that we might have to do some of this ourselves because state, federal may not be there in time.
Reason for my question?
Yep, good question. Okay, resolution fourteen sixteen is on the table. Is there any further discussion, questions? Please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think the best part of your question is, Ryan, that we don't want people to read this and get the false hope that they're gonna get a new bridge this year.
Yeah.
Okay, next one is resolution fourteen seventeen and this is for structure six one fifty-three two hundred.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon?
Second.
Second by Krogman, call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next one on our list is resolution fourteen eighteen and this is for structure six one fifty-nine two twenty-one.
So moved.
Moved by Krogman, second by Miller, call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next one is fourteen dash nineteen and this is structure number six one ninety oh forty-one.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman, discussion, call a roll please.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The last one is resolution fourteen dash twenty and this is for structure six two eighteen zero nine zero.
So moved.
Moved by Krogman, second Wyeth, discussion, call a roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item H on our agenda, action to approve the, an application and easement for membership in water services with King Brook Rural Water System. And Dick, do you have some background before we?
This is a Sinai one.
Right.
Yeah, they're just, if we don't sign up to go with rural water, we won't have water at our shop over there.
Right.
They're gonna convert the whole thing, so that's why we want, I, I would recommend approving so we get...
Sure. Okay, chair would entertain a motion approving such. Wyeth?
Second.
Second. Krogman? Any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number ten on our agenda is our commission assistant report. Stephanie?
Would you like to go through that surplus analysis or not? Okay.
Sure.
Included in your packet was the updated graphs that represent both the type, reporting timeframes as well as the monthly timeframes. The one that you see here, like Stacy said, March is a reporting time. We're still varying between the two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen levels. When we visited with Rod about this, or when I visited with Rod about this, it's been three years ago, about what a comfortable level would be. His statement to me was not wanting to see us get below twelve percent at the lowest time of year. This would be our lowest reporting time of the year because we have already started expending funds, but we have not received tax collections for the year yet. You know, property taxes haven't come in yet, so as you can see, if you compare even in two thousand twelve in March versus September, you know, it went up quite significantly there. If we end between two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, similar to where we are now, we'll be between twenty-one and twenty-four percent if it stays on trend from previous times. You can also see on the second page, we'd show our monthly balance, how that's been going, as well as, this is a comparison of the previous years, two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve and two thousand eleven. It's been helpful since Stacy started doing this on a monthly basis so we can really kind of get a better picture before you only looked at it three times a year, but it's really helpful to see how it varies from month to month. You did have some discussion at the last meeting about designations. I'm sure that you all looked at on Stacy's report that shows what the actual designations are for current. And as I said at the last meeting, you can change that at any time by just making a motion. So if you wanted to separate these out at any time, maybe after you get through strategic planning or in the budgeting session, you can do it at any time and you can separate that into two specific projects. As far as the other items, I guess we've kind of already went through what was on my report. I did email out to you, update from our consultants for the strategic planning session and they expect to have the results to me Friday, so I can send those out to all of you and then that way you'll be able to review them over the weekend before you meet with departments on Tuesday. We will not be meeting with community health. I did, I did invite them, however, the state has told them that because she is, the nurses are state employees, they don't think it's appropriate for the state employees to participate in the discussion, so they will not be participating. Otherwise, if you saw the list of everyone who completed, all the department heads turned theirs in and we did get our results from the four-H board as well, I know they had a special meeting to go through it and I think that's probably it for that unless you guys need anything else put together before your meetings with departments on Tuesday. No? Okay. I do have it set up in the community room, so I'll just set it up as a, kind of a round table thing like we've done in the past in their for work session. The other items is, just to be noted, the, each year, at least once a year, we're required to list in the minutes who our current volunteers are for work comp purposes and so I've asked Bob and Marty for an updated volunteer list and that was included in your packet and those are the people that would be covered by the county's work comp when we pay that claim in. And then you also receive several correspondence items which are listed there. I did participate in the tabletop exercise too, it was very, I thought it was a good exercise to be a part of. We came up with some ideas, at least from our perspective, what we could do to maybe help out with getting information out through social media sites, so we kind of worked on putting a cheat sheet together for other people. I will, next week, I was supposed to be attending the state SHRM conference on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday morning in Sioux Falls. I would like to ask permission if it's still okay if I go to that conference. I think it's important to hear the legal updates and things like that for HR. The other item, our Erin will be starting on Monday thankfully, so we're happy to have IT on staff. Jason coordinated a meeting for the people that are on the, that use the Zucker software and we're gonna be meeting with them this afternoon to talk about some connectivity issues between the city and county, making sure that the software's gonna work well from our side. And I want to thank you for the three days of vacation to be able to spend some time with my kids, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Stephanie? Abigail, deputy state's attorney.
Just providing an update on the LEDs Zucker software from our office's standpoint. It has been installed on all of our computers and we did have a kind of informal training with Bart Sweetby. He came over and, and he gave us the run-through on everything and in all honesty, it probably helps that Clyde and I are gone this week while they're getting the kinks worked out so that by the time we come back, hopefully everything's cohesive, but it's, it's a little different from our standpoint in that previously, the police department and sheriff's department had been typically bringing over hard copies of reports, so you know, this is just, we're retrieving them through the software program or they can be emailed to us, so it's not, it's not a huge change by any stretch on our end, but it's just, it is gonna take more out of our supply budget. It's gonna be a lot more paper, a lot more ink. We might be burning our, our audio/video recordings ourselves now, doing all of that, you know, audiovisual, audio/video stuff on our end. So it is a little bit of extra work, but I think once, I think it's great, the access that our department will have to the program is phenomenal. We don't have the ability to edit or enter any of the information, we can just retrieve what's already been in there, so it's just a matter of getting everybody up to date on it, knowing how things operate and then my concern, and this is something that Clyde and I'll have to work with the different agencies on, is just ideally hoping that the PD and the sheriff's department are utilizing it in the exact same way and things are connecting to our office in the exact same way, because it's, it can be frustrating when you're doing things separately, so. But we're, it's a work in progress and I think it will be a good thing overall and I already say to this, but Clyde and I are leaving for Deadwood today and will be gone until Friday, so that's it for me, if anyone has any questions.
Okay. Stephanie, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing, if I could take another minute when you have an opportunity.
Okay, we'll get done with Abby first. Any questions for Abby? And I think you bring up a good point, there's gonna be a little added cost on your side, but we don't, we don't see the indirect savings or the efficiency that we get through this, that we've got everybody on the same page, everybody's looking instantly at the same report. I mean, there's, yes, there's cost, but there's also savings in labor and man-hours and, you know, all of those things.
And I would just put out, I mean, the costs would, are not significant either, you know, it's maybe an extra thousand dollars of supply budget each year, it's not huge, so.
No, but the, the overall efficiencies, you know, the money is well, well spent. Any other questions for Abby? Okay, Stephanie, you said you missed an item?
I'll just wait till next Tuesday, it's okay.
You sure?
Yeah.
We'll move on to commissioners. Let Ryan go first today.
All right. Turn that on. I had a BDC meeting last week, on Wednesday, and they've been working hard with Minnesota West on the South Dakota Education Campus, trying to provide some education opportunities for industry because they're working on workforce, workforce is probably their main priority right now because of, you know, the lack of their opportunities and stuff like that. There's a lot of opportunities, but not as much workforce and everybody's looking for people, so that's one of their, been focusing on that and entrepreneurship is also one of their main focuses. They've really kind of cut down on recruiting of, of businesses and that kind of thing because of our lack of workforce, that we don't want to bring somebody in and then they can't find workers and it competes against existing workforce people here already, so they've been working on that and worked with an agreement with Minnesota West to continue on that, which has been good and they're continuing to try to make that project work, the South Dakota Education Campus. It's not paying for itself right now, but as they fill it up and continue to offer more classes, hopefully they'll be getting to that point, so. Also, they're looking for a grant for, for their building, rural business enterprise grant to fix out some, some laboratory equipment and that type of stuff and some sinks and cabinets and working towards that, but mainly, again, the focus has been on workforce development for them here and will be for the near future, so.
Yeah, you got a question?
I do. How, where, how, what's the status of the building?
It's coming along. Like I said, there's some cabinetry and stuff like that that needs to be in there that they can't, so they're applying for a rural enterprise grant, which would be, it's gonna cost about sixty grand, they're trying to get thirty thousand for it, but it's all coming along, it's, they got a slow start because of the winter. I think Mills, Mills Construction is the, is the contractor for it and seems to be coming along pretty well. And let me see here, I think that's about all I have since last Tuesday, so.
Okay, we'll come this way. Stephanie?
I didn't have any meetings thankfully, so I could get ready for twenty-six people at my house for Easter.
So you had twenty-six well-fed people. Good. Okay, Dennis?
Well, the only thing I had was, had a conference call at, on the seventeenth with Well, the only I had was, had a conference call on the 17th with our GIS work group that's currently meeting to select a vendor for our GIS project for the state. And I'm leaving after this meeting, going out to Pier, and we're interviewing some firms to look at for that GIS, to set up the statewide mapping system. So that's all I had, was that conference call last week.
Okay. Mr. Wyseth?
Okay, the 9/11 meeting, you were there, Donnie? And it kind of goes back, well, it was informative to me since it was my first meeting. And back on that a little bit, that Bruce Fire Department, I called up there to give my RSVP that I wasn't coming, and to give my thanks. I made the mistake to ask the question if a problem that was pointed out last year had been solved. And that's not a mistake, I guess. But I ended up making five more phone calls and finding out we had a little problem up there. And being way above my pay grade on that type of equipment, I called Mr. Hill and said, would he check on it? And he said he would. And after, I got an email yesterday from Robert that, that he did, we talked to Daryl Hartman and somebody else to solve this problem, hopefully, and he's going to call Richie Stokes and the fire chief up there, and see if we can get this taken care of. And I'll check with Richie later and see how they're doing up there. But that Harland Selhaus?
Feldhaus.
Yeah, great guy. He was, gave the tour of the fire department last year. I mean, he was, and he's the one that pointed it out, and they still are having a problem. So hopefully, we can figure it out. Equipment, well, okay, like I said, it's above my pay grade. Their analysis, they're in a hole, and they're being missed. But it has something to do with digitizing and going from different types. And Robert thinks with Chief, by using another system, that they'll get this taken care of. And like I say, I don't have all the details, I just know when there's a problem, and I go to the person that can solve it, and I'll follow up to make sure it gets solved.
Is it Rob?
You're asking questions that is beyond me. They have a problem. They feel they're in a hole, and they're not getting all the signals that they want. And Robert thinks there's another way of doing this, and so does Daryl. They're going to get a hold of Richie, and we'll find out. Yes, Dennis?
On that, Tom, I did make a special point when I went up there for that meeting and talked to Mr. Feldhaus. And he said things are working 100% better than what they were. He didn't have any complaints. He said there's some of them that still are having some concerns, and you may have talked to some of them. But they're very satisfied that it's so much better than it was, and maybe there's some tweaking that can be done. But I think it's not like it was, they're getting their calls. Some people claim that they're not getting things coming through. Well, we were up there that night, and the page came through at 6:30, and to me, it was loud and clear. So I think it's just, maybe they get in spots where their radios don't work like they would like to have them work, and maybe there's just things that, you know, you can't fix and that. But I, they were, he was very satisfied. He was the one that was moving us toward complaining all the time that we, he'd like to see something done. So he was satisfied the way it's working, even though there's some smaller.
Was that Mr. Stokes?
What's that?
Mr. Stokes?
No, no. Feldhaus, Feldhaus?
Yeah, Harland Feldhaus.
Yeah, he's the one that I talked to that originally started complaining years.
Yeah, a year ago.
Yeah, a year ago, he's the one who gave us a tour. But he was the one I talked to specifically over there, and I don't even know if he's on the fire department anymore.
I didn't talk to him, but I talked to several others eventually. I started out with one person that I knew, Bruce, on the fire department, then they gave me somebody else before long. I mean, I had talked to quite a few, but Mr. Stokes, Richie Stokes, was the fire chief, and he said there was a problem still. So we'll see, hopefully it gets solved. And, yeah, and so then that afternoon, I had Growth Partnership, and it's been a long meeting on strategy, legislative matters, and things like that, because there's competition in the research field, and some are getting a little more money from the legislature now. And so a little discussion along those lines. And then they have a couple of big fish on the line, and so not a lot of little ones right now, so we talked about that, and that was encouraging. You know, it's tougher to land the big ones. And so we'll see how that pans out over the next month or two. Then yesterday, oh, the, well, let me save this for last, East Central Behavior House last night, and they are adding a lot of board members right now, major transition, and some of the new ones look very good, and we had a nice meeting yesterday. And they're strategizing for some fundraising and then different ways of meeting the needs of the county. They have added every school district to their program and the Boys and Girls Club. And how they, when they get with, as the presentation we had from Mike, is when they get children with problems, counselors can only take it so far. And then many of these problems go back home. And so that's how they get involved with the whole family or different individuals in the family. So it's a growing situation. Employment, workforce development is a problem for them. So as everybody else, I guess we're a growing community. Lastly, after our meeting with Sioux Valley, Michelle Nielsen emailed me several times with basic questions, and so I was glad to answer them. And then it got above my pay grade again, and I started including Don, Kerry Brech, and Brad, who are from Banner. One, they were asking questions about 213th over by Aurora, and they were asking questions about the project out there. It did, in all the emails, it did lead to the question, are we clear with Brad now that we're waiting a year? Is he supposed to be coming up with two plans? We're going to get the 100-foot right away, but are we going to add, are we going to pay for those poles to be moved? Yes, no, maybe? And if we have maybe, it depends on what they cost, so should he be designing two, two cuts? One, if we have 100-foot right away, and one if we have the poles where they're at? And I just wondered, is he clear on what we're shooting for? Because we might, my point is, we get next year, we may find that we can't afford the Sioux Valley thing. So we may have a 100-foot right away, but we're going to be limited in our width because of the poles. So is he supposed to be working up Plan A and Plan B?
I, with our meeting with Sioux Valley, I thought he was going to give them the cuts if we had to design it in that narrow right away. And that would help them in their decision-making process, and us as well.
That'd be the 66-foot.
Or the 66.
Should we have Brad also designing, if we get the poles moved, and the cuts would be different than on 100-foot right away?
Yeah.
And the poles are moved, should we have him working on that also?
Well, I, the way I took it is, we would, we find out what the cuts are, if we had to stay within that 66-foot right away. And, but then we should also, then that would give, give us a clear picture of what we're really up against in regards to their services, and then move forward with discussions in regards to costs, possible cost-sharing, things like that. So, you know, by the summer, sometime later summer, we'd have a good handle on what, what any relocation costs might be.
Well, yeah, there is a possibility the 66 isn't going to work because of the cuts. But the other is, though, if we got 100 feet and we can get those poles moved, we can increase the speed and make it a safer ditch.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if he, at what point do we want to give him the go-ahead?
We need, we need, it's through this process, and Brad's communication with Sioux Valley Energy, we need to pin down from them, you know, a much more accurate estimate of cost. And then from that point, we can determine, you know, what type of participating agreement we have with them. But, and that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be a very hard process or a very long process for anybody to come up with. I mean, Sioux Valley can gather those costs relatively fast.
So we'll wait on the 100-foot plans, okay?
Well, and I guess, you know, I've had just brief conversations too, and I think, you know, as we're looking at different options, and certainly, I think moving of the poles on either side, we keep talking about Sioux Valley, but, but we've got BMU on the other side, and I mean, I think the cost of moving either one of those lines are major, 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 major costs, that I don't know if we're ever going to resolve to who's going to pay for it. If we have to pay for it specifically for Sioux Valley, I don't think they're going to get moved, because we just can't afford that. And secondly, you know, then we've got other land issues to get, buy land so that they can continue with their easement. You know, BMU's sitting out there, you know, they certainly don't want to move those big power poles that they have. And I guess as another option, I guess I'd like to have Banner continue, continue to look into, you know, all these options. But, you know, just a discussion yesterday, well, maybe we should, maybe we should look at curb and gutter. And then you don't have your slopes, you know, you don't have your ditches like you normally would have. You'd have drop inlets, you'd have culverts, you'd have things like that. Maybe we could build this, and maybe we could sit and say, okay, you know, we're not going to require to move these poles, and if we put curb and gutter out there, which then will help with the speed, because that's going to keep, you know, to keep the cars from sliding, and in most cases, off the road, and kind of meet the guidelines. So, I mean, I, that was one thing we kind of laughed about, whether we were going to put curb and gutter out there, but, you know, and as Ryan said too, and we talked about this, you know, we're going to put curb and gutter out there, and put a street out there. Maybe it's a time to have a utility discussion of putting water in sewer. I mean, we need to sit down and talk with maybe Brookings Utility specifically and just say, look, you know, we're, we're looking at this, because we've had conversation with Sioux Valley, but we really haven't sat down with BMU saying, okay, how can we work together? I'd like to have a plan where we all work together and make this thing work, instead of us trying to force one thing or another on either anybody. So I, I'd like to have Banner kind of look at a curb and gutter system, and I guess there, all you do is kind of make your road so it isn't flat, it's, you know, kind of rolls in the water, you know, will come off that way. And the ditches aren't, don't have to be sloped back, which then would not affect the poles that are there, so.
I think that's a great idea. And I did, I had a constituent call and say, why, why don't you do curb and gutter? And not knowing what the cost might be, but if we're looking at cost to move poles, let's take that money and put that into the curb and gutter. I think it's a great idea, at least for that first mile where we have the pole issues.
Yeah, I mean, that first mile is where we would put the curb and gutter, and if we, I mean, and I, you know, this preliminary, I think it's 100, 100 to 150,000 dollars probably for that mile on both sides, curb and gutter. I mean, that's, we could sit down and negotiate with each other, and it'd be a lot cheaper than moving the poles. And if it, if it takes care of our problem and gets a speed where it's acceptable, I mean, I think we should talk with Banner about looking at that option.
Okay.
And if, somebody probably should call Brad, if you want me to, just to, or somebody should talk.
Tom, you've been in, why don't you give Brad a call? You've been talking to him.
Yeah, just kind of, just to say, look at, if that's a feasible option of...
Well, I think Brad mentioned it somewhere. Was it maybe in, okay?
He did, and we kind of go, curb and gutter, ah. But now, maybe when we realize the cost of moving the pole, maybe curb and gutter.
I think he may have, after our meeting, he kind of said, you know, he can curb and gutter, and he would change the cuts, and didn't respond. Okay, so thanks for bringing it up, Dennis.
Well, it's just, it would be good if we got everybody around, everybody around one table, and visited about it. Get utilities there, have the real electric there, have our engineer there, so that when we start talking about some of this stuff, they're hearing it straight.
And maybe, I'm not saying I can't speak for anybody, but maybe BMU's saying, okay, our side is, you know, be a partner on our side, and Sioux Valley's saying, okay, we don't have to move our poles, maybe we can be a partner on the other side, whatever it would be. But I, I just think we need to have those conversations. That'll move things along.
Mm-hmm. We will proceed that way. Anything else, Tom?
No, no.
You're sure?
That's, that's...
Okay. All right. First of all, I'd like to thank our staff in all departments every time we have an adjustment or someone moves on in their career. It's just great to see staff step up and pull the extra weight in the interim before we get a replacement hired. And Jason and his crew down there really went to work and helped us along, as well as some of the other folks. So I'd like to see that type of cooperation. Meetings that I went to, I think, first of all, I went to, attended the tabletop, and that was a very interesting discussion, as we go through and we talk about emergency management and emergency planning, and the climatic changes that we're having. I thought it was interesting to note that if we had one of those half-mile-wide tornadoes and it came the path that Bob had for us in that exercise, it would virtually take out the assets of the community in regards to response. It would take out the National Guard, it would take out the county facilities, it would take out city facilities, and then where do we go for equipment? So you try and start planning around those things. So I thought it was excellent, and I thought it was great that we had really all the players there. And it was interesting, Tom, that in the exercise, mental health came up, because the storm is just the beginning. It's that long-term recovery, healing process that a community has to go through that, that really makes a lot of, a lot of issues. Then the 911 meeting, and I think we've touched on that quite a bit. Marty mentioned the Zerker, and we're getting that up and going. And as I mentioned, we had a successful test, because all of the sirens went off at the same time. And Marty, is there any other thing that stood out there, or Tom, that really caught your, on the 911 meeting? I mean, I just thought it was, we had a good meeting. I thought a lot of open discussion, talking about Zerker and how we're working together to get it all up and get it running, and the cooperation with them. Of course, we all were involved in our equalization. And then I had an interesting teleconference with the SCAS, we call it, the Small Community Advisory Subcommittee. And we're talking about the major changes in the Clean Water Act, again, is being proposed. And first blush, it looks like a lot of things are advantageous to us. We've got the agricultural exemptions, it doesn't affect our tiling and some of the other projects that we're doing out here in rural America. But then it's a 370-page document, and the more you start digging through it, you start wondering, is this really the way it is? And the verbiage tends to change. So it's, it's going to be an interesting comment period. And it's something the county government's really got to be watching, because water is probably one of the key issues, the key issue of the future, is our water management and quantities, and how we're going to handle it. Then we had the Housing Board, and that, Mike brought us up speed on some of the things going on there, and the vouchers and the availability. And I think that's the primary thing that we had, that I've had. I wasn't there as a county rep, but I did go to the West Oakwood Homeowners Association meeting the other day, and Rhodes did come up, and also lightly talked about the future of the siren, and everybody was, was pleased that something like that would be happening in the park area.
Don, are they porting vouchers again?
Pardon?
Are they porting vouchers again?
Yeah. Yep. Can't get away from it. Yes, Dennis?
Just have any, just a question on our, on our public notices, just so I make sure I got my calendar right. You've got here...
Yeah, there's an error on there, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's supposed to be May 6th, right? 1 o'clock?
Yep. That was supposed to be May 6th at 1 o'clock, the other one is April 29th, and I should have the calendar finalized for you. Originally, you were going to do it on the 29th, and then we switched it and hadn't updated the public notice part of the agenda.
So it's 9 o'clock on the 29th?
29, no, on the 29th, you have a regular, yes, I'm sorry, on the 29th, I believe it's at 9 o'clock is our first one. Let me pull it up.
And then our, then our May 5th one is after our meeting in the afternoon.
Right.
May 6th.
Okay, 6th, I mean, 6th. Yep.
And I just, I just told, she's been starting at 1, because not knowing when you guys would get done, and usually, some of you have a commitment on Tuesdays from 12 to 1, so I figured you could just come back after lunch and start.
Take a break and come back.
Okay.
And I, I was going to state this earlier, because of the number of appointments that you have with department heads next week, I would anticipate that you guys should plan on being here until early afternoon, to give time for everybody, you know, 2 to 3 o'clock. But I should have those finalized today. I'm going to make sure nobody else needed to change an appointment time slot, so.
Any other questions, comments, anything from department heads that got overlooked? Commissioners? Hearing none? Declare the meeting adjourned.